I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Select meeting from Monday, June seventeen, May twenty-four to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Item two, public hearing. To consider it, on two items, first of which is programs that shall be included on our list for the twenty twenty-four Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, and two dot two is a board amendment to extend the temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments in the town of Guilford. Let's take item one. We have, this is an annual exercise that allows for local nonprofits to receive state slash federal funding under the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act. This, quite honestly, this is the, the least amount of applications I think we've seen in some time. I think that may have something to do with the fact that the American Rescue Plan funds that we had provided through the Guilford Foundation may well have, you know, maybe it's unnecessary, but nonetheless.
You don't think they got confused that they got that thing to get played for that?
No. Oh, these are, these have been, these have been in existence for some time. There was some.
Yeah, I was just thinking that it's the life that I haven't gotten that. That's good though. That's what it was meant to do.
So let's take the first one, which is Lifelinks Corporation. And I do want to make the following observation is that the Guilford Human Services Commission denied their application earlier this year related to the two thousand twenty-five budget year for an allocation owing to some concerns over the efficacy of the program that they're running. So I, for one, after seeing that vetted by the our Human Services Commission, would not be inclined to support this. If others have any comments, sir.
I think that makes sense. And we didn't delve into it too much publicly at the time. It didn't seem appropriate for that purpose six months ago. But I'm wondering, so a list is submitted to the state by the town of Guilford. Are we attesting anything? Are we claiming to have vetted the applications or?
We are, we are recommending that they receive the funding. That's, yeah, which in effect is a validation of the, the opportunity.
It is.
So the other one is Sarah Foundation, and Sarah is a consistent applicant for this program. Their grant writing folks are right on top of things. So again, the neighborhood area to be served, Guilford, Madison, Clinton, Westbrook, and Old Saybrook. And then the, they recently acquired property which will serve to expand the current day support program located on the adjacent property to include recreation, leisure, sports, respite services, life skills. The need for the service continues to grow. A recent opening of the Gavin and Friends Facility in Guilford, which is quickly reaching its peak. I just did a quick mention of the Gavin and Friends Facility. That was done by an individual, Lynette Toscano, I think it is, who funded, who purchased the property, funded it, and has worked closely with Sarah on those, on those services. So I would be wholeheartedly in favor of endorsing the Sarah Foundation's application for the Neighborhood Assistance Act.
I support that. I just wanted to comment on your previous comment about the, the other applicant.
Yep.
My only thought process is this, their application is specific for energy efficiency upgrades.
Right.
My, my thought process is if there was a way to make sure that the funds specifically went to that, there is a certain logic to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what the enforcement.
Capability.
Capabilities are for us, if at all.
So the message at this point in time.
Is, do we have time to give lifelings an opportunity to explain or defend themselves or?
I don't know what the date is on the application. I wonder if this is one of those fiscal year funding, state fiscal year funding, which would be July one. Well, why don't we try to find that out? And if it's something we want.
They could come back. I mean, they would have to vacuum it. We knew that it was an opportunity, but just let them know that at this point we're inclined to decline. But if they'd like to make more comments, we'd be happy to listen.
Okay. So we'll follow up on that. Then is there a motion to, oh, no, we can't do that once we get back into the, into the regular meeting in terms of approving. Anything else on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program? Anyone from the public want to comment? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to item two. And this is the ordinance amendment to extend the temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments in the town of Guilford, based on our most recent Board of Select hearing on cannabis, where we had proposed an ordinance that would have imposed a total ban. The input that we received from that meeting was not conclusive in terms of supporting the outright ban. And we have committed as a group to conduct a series of workshops ourselves to come up with some type of alternative to put out to the public related to cannabis activities, all eleven forms of business. So the essence of this act to extend the moratorium is to protect our community from an application appearing. If, if this, if this is not extended beyond June thirty, could come in and apply for a license because it's legal in the state of Connecticut. So this is, in effect, protecting us against potential legal implications related to someone filing us that way. So. Anyone in the public who are looking to speak on it, on this extended moratorium? Yep, come on up. Name an address for the record.
Matt?
Hold on. I've got, yes?
Oh, hi. Hi, this is, yes, just let me know when it's my turn to speak.
You got it. Okay.
You can let him go. Okay. Deborah, the news is eighteen, Chevrolet Road. I, I would appreciate an extension on the moratorium. I'm just throwing this out there. I don't know you. I know you can't answer questions, but I'm inclined to start a petition against having them, any establishments in the town. I feel that, I guess, strong about the situation. And I, one thing I wonder is if it could be extended until voting in November and have the public vote on it at referendum. And I don't know if that's something that's possible, and we get more input. I do understand that did a survey. I do believe that people that want something like this will share it with their friends, and so they will have their friends and go on, do the survey. I happened to see the survey haphazardly. And I think that one of the people at the last meeting mentioned that she felt there wasn't room for you to give your opinion. It's sort of, you had to answer a question to go to a next question, and you said you hadn't heard that before. I did feel that way. And maybe if you go to the survey, or someone else goes to the survey, you could see it. It's sort of, you had to pick the least of what you felt was bad in order to move on. That's how I felt about the survey. I know that it, it involves a widespread, you would want something that involved a wide spectrum of concerns about it. So I'm inclined to do a petition and to actually, if it's possible, to say to people, if you want to list your age down, when you write your name and address, to show that we've gotten a varied amount of people in, in a petition against having an establishment. So that's what I'm thinking of. So you giving it more time, it kind of really concerned me when people were talking about doing it on public property, and, you know, we don't drink on the green. They think it's okay to drink on. And this is what opens this up. It opens it up to a larger thought process with pot cafes and, you know, I mean, like, I really don't want to walk down the street in Guilford and smell that, you know. If people want to do it in their own home, you know, it's fine. I am not, they're adults. I have nothing against that. I do also want to, again, reiterate the fact that even though it's available to twenty-one and older, that the brain is still developing up until twenty-five, and those choosing from twenty-one to twenty-five to participate could have health issues, emotional issues, mental issues, and then you're dealing with another issue. So thank you for listening to me, and I hope you extend the moratorium.
Thank you, Del. Eric, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Matt. It's Eric Majewski, ninety-eight Valley Shore Drive, Guilford, Connecticut. I, I'm also in favor of extending the moratorium, and I agree a hundred percent. If we could get that as a referendum to the town, I think more people would participate. You know, the problem with a lot of these meetings is that people are working. I just recently retired, so I've got a little more time to be involved in what's going on in the town. But I am definitely concerned about, you know, some of the, some of the issues that the lady previous to me just, just brought up. And I agree a hundred percent with her.
Great, Eric. Thank you very much. Thanks for taking the time to join us this morning as well. Anyone else wish, anyone else wishing to address the issue?
I did have a communication from another citizen making that same point that Debbie brought up, a, a question on the ballot. Would this be the appropriate time to talk?
Yeah, I think we take, yeah.
We looked into this.
We have.
I was gonna say, this has come up before.
Yes, yes. And we would not be taking a vote on whether or not, on what the ordinance would be. That's our job.
Right.
But as an advisory question, just an opinion, get a pulse of the public or whatever. We could do something like that.
Agreed.
I, I thought you did look into it, and there was a reason that it couldn't go on the ballot.
There was specifics of it. I mean, that's the problem with whether it be a petition or, it wouldn't be a referendum question, like a budget question. It would have to be an advisory question where we simply, it's the difference between a poll.
More no's than yeses, it wouldn't, we wouldn't, that wouldn't be the final.
The question on the ballot would be, yes, yes or no. It would be, what's your opinion?
I mean, the complicated thing is, it's really not just a yes or no. The ordinance that we put out there for discussion purposes was a no to everything. But it's complicated. There are, you know, all different, the eleven establishments. So.
Okay, anyone else?
I do think getting, I, I, I think the answer to our last public hearing is, we, we need to get more people involved in the conversation. I mean, a lot of people run the issue of the seventy-four percent poll of the flag poll, but, you know, and then you point out to them, that's great, that seventy-four percent of a thousand people out of twenty thousand plus people. I mean, you gotta look at polling, to the point about the questions. I mean, polling is highly subjective.
And even if we end up not having any, any establishment of any of the eleven opportunities or whatever they are, you could be smelling it on the street anyway. And we do.
So, you know. One of the things that we talked about is banning of smoking on town property. So that would be, but.
Yeah, but what if you mean just smoking at that point? Yeah, forget. I mean.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the smoking is what's more offensive, because you're walking by, you get a contact eye from.
I know. There's articles out today about, you know, the increase of, of traffic deaths and everything, and, and that the problem is, is that the effects of it can't be measured. So they, they know that you start mixing it with alcohol and, and that, that.
I saw that same article.
There's a lot of questions out there.
Yeah. I saw that article in the Red Street this morning.
I wish, I wish that police had, and.
The police will not, police, police will not wait. They do not make policy.
Yeah, they can't. They, they have. No, there's some questions I would love to have answers to, which maybe I gotta do offline or something. Like, yeah.
Well, we're gonna have some workshop hours to, to talk about these things. So, all right. If there's no other comments, let's proceed to the balance of the agenda, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Let me move on to approval of minutes for dot one, June third, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Second. In a second. Thank you. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Those on Zoom, Salkman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Four dot two, June third, twenty twenty-four, is public hearing, special meeting. Is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second. Okay. Any comments, questions, suggested changes?
I have a suggested change. I'm trying to find it. It's the gentleman from Bradford who spoke. And we just have in our minutes that his business has won best on the shoreline, blah, blah, blah. I think we should.
Shrink that, yeah.
We have to advertise any of his business again.
I'd be, I'd support that as well, so.
It's obvious where it is on the second page.
Yep. Anybody, anybody else? To the amended minutes, those in favor, Salkman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Interesting. Four dot three, June seventh, twenty twenty-four, special meeting. Is there a motion?
Some would.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, suggested changes? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Salkman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item five. Right on cue. We watching?
Maybe. Maybe I cheat.
Finance Director Mary Jane Malavacy, receive our monthly report from the Finance Director. Good morning, MJ.
Good morning.
How are we?
Pretty good. We'll start on revenues. You'll see through the end of May, we're about ninety-two percent through our year, we have brought in more revenue than, than budgeted, as we have discussed the last couple of months. I do expect that number, you know, potentially to reach about one point five million after the last year, and we get our, the last of our grants in through the state and our local revenue. But that's a real base estimate at the moment.
Okay.
Any particular questions on revenue?
Any concern with some of the departments that are short?
Well, um.
Health department seems low, given where we've been the last couple of years.
Right. Yeah. And, and the town clerk, we did reduce their budgets in the upcoming year because we are seeing a downturn in, in some of those areas. So, like, the town clerk, I doubt they're gonna meet their revenues. But like with every year, we have some departments that do and some departments that don't, and we're able to, to cover those for other. Like I said, we've made an adjustment to next year's budget because of that.
Right. As we were talking offline before the meeting, building, you see this significant check last week for apartment fees for the proposed target facility. So they're already, the building is already over.
And, and a one month sway would have put it in next year. So, you know, you know, we certainly don't budget for those spikes. We, you know, we, we budget for the average of what we expect.
So in the clerk's budget, she has no indication of any particular why it's.
Conveyance fees, I would bet.
Yeah, yeah. Conveyance fees are down. It's only seventy-two percent. And even recording fees. So.
So it is, they'll say market.
It is correct. Yes, absolutely. Which we're seeing.
Nationally.
Oh, right. And, and across many departments, because that touches many departments, whether it's.
Interesting that we were one of the last towns affected, frankly.
Yeah. Anything else on revenue?
I'll, I'll just say park and, park and rec, you know, this last month, we usually generate, you know, right now is when we're selling big passes. And, yeah, this week alone, people are gonna want to be at the beaches.
Yeah.
And, and that's also revenue from the kayaks and, and that type of thing.
The rental shop.
Yeah. And we've added the new, the, the blowups at, at Lake Quantico. So that's gonna be running through this as well. So.
The powerboats, the powerboats.
The powerboats. The flamingo. That's all. Flamingo in my head. It was, yeah.
Sue was helping with that word.
I can hardly wait to hear everyone's reaction to that. I think that's gonna be really neat.
It's gonna flow through this line item. So we'll see how that goes.
Anything further on revenue?
You know immediately it's gonna happen. There's people gonna assume they aren't just happening.
Right. Okay. Done with revenues, expenditures?
On the expenditure side, we are on, for the town, so if I don't include the Board of Ed, the town, we're at ninety-three point seven, just slightly over the ninety-one point seven where we should be. I'm gonna start from the bottom. You'll see capital. We have a number of encumbrances out on capital, but that overage is mainly due to items that we have funded through other, other means, mostly the fund balance of where we've put money aside. So we'll be making those whole over the next couple of months, so that will, will not be over. Note that the, the fire, fire department is at ninety-nine percent. You'll see their encumbrances are way down. We have been working with the fire department already, reducing all their encumbrances because of where their budget stands. At, at this point, I can pretty much guarantee that that budget's gonna go over during the month of June. We'll just hope to keep it down and, and down what we can. I know they've had some real specific building and vehicle maintenance items. If you look at their, those line items, they're, they're way over as well because of unanticipated, just general expenses, and even just their operating expenses. The more, the more the ambulance goes out, the more we have to replenish that. And you see, you see that over in the revenue. They're a hundred and twelve percent. So when that revenue goes over, that means our ambulance is going out more. That means we have to have more expense. So it, it really balances it out from one side to the other. Any other specific questions?
Just pointing out, golf course continues to provide strong financials. In fact, they're actually running, revenues are running ahead of expenditures through May, and.
And their expenditures are right on. Yeah, their, their expenditures are right on. So we, you know, that could go either way, you know.
Well, June, June should be a big month.
Right.
Traditionally. All right. Anything else on expenditures? Medical?
So on the medical side, you'll see May, another big jump from April to May, up four hundred thousand dollars in claims. Our stop loss, we have now thirty-eight covered members over seventy-five thousand, which is eight more than the prior month, and an additional three members that have gone over the hundred and fifty thousand mark. We're up to eleven. We're at forty-two percent of our stop loss at this point. That percentage is the highest it's been in, in the last few years. So, so we're looking, at this point, a deficit in our, in, in the bottom line. We'll see how that goes through the rest of the year. But we did anticipate the potential of using some of our fund balance. So I'm not surprised to see that. So, and, and we've done for the upcoming year as well.
This obviously raises a concern for me, given the adjustments we made to the fiscal year twenty-five healthcare costs with this kind of trend, if you will, March, April, both over one point four, now May at one point eight. All right. Is there any reason for concern based on what we, the adjustments that were made?
I don't think so. We've based those on the claims, you know, we, we base next year on the claims we have this year. You know, it's hard, it's healthcare. It, you know, one, one particular incident could sway us, you know, a couple thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So it's really, we, that's why we work on that medical budget for as long, you know, up till the very last minute. And that's why the companies won't bid on us until the very last minute. They want to see these numbers. You know, so the June, the, the, the main number of one point eight was most likely not in that calculation. We would have had an estimate at that point. But I, I think we do the best we can with the data we have at the moment. And luckily, our medical fund has the ability to fluctuate up and down as, as we go from year to year. You know, at this point, I almost, I almost rather see it go over than, than to, you know, to have big surpluses, because at least this way we, the fund is being managed more appropriately. That makes sense, but.
Yeah, such a difficult guess. Exactly.
Anything to add, Mitch?
I mean, it's just that going to next year, firefighters, we've got a different program, so it takes that, some of the risks is taken out of that for us. Also, an update of the Slim Nation for Rob Neves' next program, which we'll actually go into next year as well. We have less people. I think we, we've basically exhausted, but we've taken the, the, the bulk out of that. So there's less, less than the twenty that our side was gonna, so that's a little bit less cost as well.
Thank you. Anything else from here?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, John Engineer Jim Pligby, six dot one, discussing the action for award bid number ten, twenty-three, twenty-four, Leech Island, Marsh Tide Gate removal and culvert replacement.
Yeah. So I, I had sent to you the bid results from that project. We're doing the projects on behalf of Connecticut Deep, and we have an agreement in place. I'm probably gonna request that you table this for now and not act on it, because I was hoping to get an assurance email from Deep on Friday that they would fund the shortcoming of the four hundred and two. They, they have the money, but there's no one willing to that email yet. So, so I would, I would suggest that we wait until we get that assurance before we would or the.
Just for personal, I mean, you know, what are the chances of it not working?
Um, slim, but.
But greater than zero.
Greater than zero. And, and so I don't think.
Okay, let me ask, ask it another way. What are some of the issues that might crop up?
So just a matter of funding and timeliness of getting the funds from Deep.
There's nothing we can do.
Right. I, I, I was assured we'd get something before your next meeting, July first. So hopefully, we can just take it up at the next meeting. And I do want to check in on one thing, too, with the contractor regarding some of the requirements of the funding, to make sure that was all included. I vetted the contractor and, you know, checked references, talked with them. But there was one thing that came up on Friday as well that I want to follow up to, so we know that the number's a number. Yep.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion to table. So.
Second.
Second. Let me, and, and any further comments or questions? I just wanted to make one comment. It was about six years ago, we were in jail with the EP, should maybe recall, and they were gonna require us to have an outside engineering firm test to any of the projects we were doing related to, to Deep. And Janice's work with the EP and her reputation of their, turned, turned the impressions around. And they have actually, they actually approached us to manage this project on their behalf. So.
It's a question with some, some frightening fines that didn't come in the past. That was our first meeting. It's like, boy, this is interesting. We really have an outstanding group of department heads, directors, chiefs in this town. It never ceases to amaze me.
I agree. All right. Anyway, let's move on to six dot two, discuss the take possible action recommendation Waste Transfer Station Committee for food scrap collection at unit-based pricing. And I understand we have a show and tell here, a little presentation. So.
Yeah.
Floor is yours.
All right. I'm Robert Jacobs, sixty-one Cherry Street, here in Guilford, and Chair, current Chair of the Committee. And we're looking at two things, and just as a hair background, we're not looking for an action today. If we want to make this presentation today, we are, I believe we've actually been scheduled with the Madison Board at their next meeting, then coming back, assuming things continue to move forward. uh, at their next meeting, um, then coming back, assuming things continue to move forward, coming back to you for July first for an action. Um, we're looking at two elements, I'm gonna go with the second one first, um, although it's a combined proposal that we continue the food scrap, scrap program. But a, a lot of the issues we're looking at, for both of these, are the whole issues with landfills. Uh, our landfills are rapidly going away, um, they don't have capacity. We need to find ways, um, as a town, as a pair of towns, um, as a state, and literally as a nation, to deal with our, our waste far more effectively. Um, one of the ways to do that is by taking out of that waste stream everything that we can. So the whole basis of recycling becomes increasingly critical. One of the things that we can, uh, recycle is the food. Um, so food scrap programs, um, taking that food, and, and food is one of the most noxious things that goes into our landfills as well, so it's a very important element. And so we're looking at continuing the program, we've already started. And I just realized as I look at the screen that I'm not following the order of what's there, my apologies. But the, the whole element, methane's responsible for so much of global warming, fifty-eight percent of that coming from our landfills, from food waste. Um, so, you know, as we look at that, uh, there's several, um, there's several elements, you can see there, um, it's heavier to haul, it's harder to burn, uh, it creates wasted resources, and again, produces more than half, significantly more than half of the methane coming out of those landfills. The second element, the whole area that we're looking at changing, is the whole element of how we price waste. Uh, let me start by saying that this does not affect, at this point, and maybe never, our, our haulers in, that go through town. Um, they primarily don't use the transfer station, um, and they're not included in what we're currently doing. This, the second element is that what we're proposing at this point does not affect the bulky waste. So what goes into the, the tractor trailers, not the compactor, is not a part of this current proposal. At some point, maybe we need to look at that as well, but this is focusing on primarily the household garbage, what goes into the compactor, um, for quite some period of time, if not the entire existence of the, the transfer station. We have done that by weight. Basically, what we're proposing at this point is we move from weight to volume. Uh, to do that, we would provide, uh, two different sized bags, uh, because it's based, you don't have to go ahead quite yet, but I'm just, but I am jumping ahead, yes. And, uh, that would, would be measured by what you could fit in the bag, and obviously, what, the weight would come into effect because you put too much, those bags are gonna rip. So that, you know, there is an, an element of weight, the actual pricing would be based on the volume of the bag. In a discussion before the meeting, we were talking about how long it takes to build up a hundred pounds of household trash, and what odors that creates if you're storing it in your garage or even outside. Uh, we wanna find a way that does, accomplishes two things, it enables the householder to deal with smaller volumes at a reasonable price, a- and also gets, uh, more of that waste, into the, the system, and because today, most of us don't have a hundred pounds of garbage, um, we're throwing things away that if we had to reduce the volume, because that's how we're pricing it, might not get thrown away, they may get recycled, and that's part of our dream, is that it's, uh, you know, taking the food out of that system, taking the recyclables out of that system, uh, more and more as, as we measure it by volume and reduced volumes. You know, if I can buy a fifteen gallon bag for a buck fifty and fill it with, you know, I'm not gonna be throwing all the stuff in there that I could have recycled. So, go ahead. And so what we're looking at, it's still unit-based, but the unit again is now volume, it's not weight. Hundred pounds is a lot of weight, for the bulky trash, that makes sense. It's not hard for someone to come in with a hundred pounds, you bring in a couch or a sofa or something, you're gonna get up there. But with the household trash, you're not reaching those numbers. And we have seen, you know, as we've done some of our research, and we've had a lot of assistance on this, we have over five hundred communities in New England alone that are implementing this type, this type of unit-based pricing. Um, and you can see some of the benefits from the specific towns that you're seeing up on the screen. And, uh, again, what we're looking at is, and the comments we're getting is, I have a lot more recycling with a little trash. As we do the right education, people feel better about what they're doing, um, separating food scraps isn't hard. Um, although, you know, people need to understand how to do that and how quickly dispose of it, because it will attract, and in our house, it was fruit flies. You know, we had constant battle with fruit flies, um, until we started moving that, uh, food scrap out of the kitchen much more rapidly. As we begin to look at it, you know, there are certain costs incurred. We do have to pay the haulers to take the food scraps away. And what we've come up with is no need for a bag, for the homeowner to use a bag, they can bring a bucket and just empty the bucket. Uh, in a sense, we provide the bags in the dumpsters that the, or the trash bins that the food scraps are going into. The unit-based pricing, at this point, what we're proposing is that it would be, they would be specific to the transfer station. They would be color-coded, um, by size, and again, by price. Um, and so though, you see the two sizes and the prices, and it would be ultimately only those, uh, two types of bags that would go into the compactor. There's several benefits to that, that we would need to make sure, first off, that they're available. So, once we know, we, in a sense, we have the clear go-ahead, we would actually talk with the local vendors in town who would make these available to the public. Uh, the bags themselves cost pennies, um, and so the majority of that price would be coming back to cover the lost revenue from the nine dollar per hundred dumping fee. And ultimately, uh, primarily based on attrition, we would look to see a reduction in labor at the transfer station. So one of the big savings becomes the, the lower payroll and all the associated costs that go with it. But the second is, as we encourage the homeowners not to, to trash what could be recycled, um, our tipping fees go down. Um, and so we're saving significant funds, proposal, uh, is to save significant funds at the transfer station overall budget through those two elements. Um, so examples of what people are charging and the different sized bags, at this point, our discussion has been to only do the fifteen and the thirty-two, and then you can see that we're really right, right in the center of what people are charging. There are people charging as low as a dollar for a, uh, fifteen gallon, two dollars for the thirty-two gallon, as high as two fifty and four seventy-five, so, and our proposal will be that it's a dollar fifty and three dollars. Again, it's a pay, it's a pay-as-you-go, which it's always been, but again, the, the focus now is on, uh, volume, not weight, and the amount, that you can bring far less, uh, without paying the full fee for a hundred pounds of trash. So, uh, it's flexible, it gives a lot more options, uh, and it reduces the need for collecting those funds at the transfer station. Um, at least initially, and, and actually, I don't know how much we could bring in discussion that occurred before the meeting, um, but.
I'm not bringing it up anymore.
But, but, well, Charlie and I had a brief discussion about two things. One is, especially in the beginning, people are gonna show up there with their own trash bags. We, we need to talk further as a committee about having the trash bags, the, the official trash bags also available at the transfer station, because we know in the beginning, people are, no matter how effective we are at getting the word out, people are gonna show up with their, you know, cute little white garbage bags and not know what to do with them, uh, because they won't be able to use those, so we're gonna need to have them available on-site, at least initially. We have to work out how we sell them on-site, whether it's just through the, you know, if somebody's buying a, a one dollar fifty cent bag, you wanna run all that through the credit card machine with all the associated fees, but we also have a no cash policy up there. So those are a few of the details that we'll need to talk with you more about. The proposed budget, excuse me, let me explain, the left and the right columns are apples to apples. That's not reality, uh, tipping fees go up, labor goes up, so when we're looking at, you know, what we're, if you look at the bottom line, currently, in addition to what the two towns are budgeting, the eighty-five thousand a year that both towns budget, there's a deficit, and that deficit has varied over the years, it's gone down since we went from the seven to nine dollar per hundred pound pricing. What we're looking at ultimately could not only re- reduce the deficit, but actually create positive income. Again, understanding that we're already, uh, funding the system with a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, if I do my math right. But, you know, but that's simply an example of the way, the potential swing of, of moving to this type of pricing. We also believe that more people may begin to do this, because they don't have to keep, you know, if I have to keep a hundred pounds of garbage around, I'm gonna stay with my hauler. Um, if I can do a simple bag, drop it off, you know, throw it in the bin, I don't even have to go on the scale, I don't have to, you know, go into the office to pay by credit card, it's going to be, it's gonna, it's going to benefit the flow through the system.
Could you go back one slide, please, uh, on the cost consideration? Uh, so you are anticipating the labor-related savings of, uh, roughly sixty thousand, is that what it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, through addition, tradition, through attrition.
Okay.
We're not looking to lay anybody off, fire anybody. And to me, that was extremely important, we're not taking away jobs.
And also, I mean, um, it will take a while for this, you, you're gonna probably need the staff you have for the moment.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So, even if we were trying to take away a job, it would not be a smart way to do it.
No, no. Exactly.
And then the, the, this, this slide is about getting, um, we're currently still in the, uh, grant program. It was extended for some period of time so that we can work out these issues, and there's the possibility of obtaining some additional grant fundings through a bridge grant, um, that, uh, we've identified, you know, roughly about a nineteen thousand dollar, um, uh, budget for a grant from Deep to help us really kick this off and be successful, which obviously, a big component is outreach and education, and, and then, um, the food, food scrap collection to help offset some of the initial costs of that as well. Um, so there's a, you know, the potential that we'll get some funding from Deep, uh, to help us with this.
Yeah, and have somebody at the transfer station for that first month full-time to, you know, help those people.
Just for the record, it's Pam Roach, who is a consultant with South Central Council, Regional Council of Governments, uh, and has been working with us on the food scrap diversion program and other initiatives.
Thanks, Matt, sorry.
No, 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 no. As we were going through this, uh, I, I wrote a couple of notes, community education, you know, with an asterisk in this to it, uh, and there, I was trying to contemplate some ways to do that, um, first off, a mailer to every household.
Right.
All right, which I probably would be including something like that, but also, as, uh, Debbie likes to mention, this would be the perfect opportunity to use the mass notification system. Doesn't get to everybody, it gets to a significant number of households, so, okay.
I, you know, I, I, I think it's a great idea. Needless to say, you know, some of Bob's conversations were, uh, the devil is in the details. I mean, to my perspective initially was, yeah, bring your own bag, pay your port out, but you're right. I mean, the mechanics of it, uh, are not ideal, okay? So, uh, I, I understand that part of it, uh, but the convenience is, uh, convenience will always encourage use and that type of thing, so I think in selling it to the, the retailers, you know, and getting the bags very readily available, almost twenty-four seven, I mean, you know, pages is open a lot, and officials, you know, there are different stores that are going to be open more regularly, and. So, uh, I, I, I think it's a great idea, and, uh, you know, as much as, you know, I thought the idea of just bringing a bag and paying you two or three dollars, I mean, that, we don't get the advantage of not having an attendant at that point, so it doesn't make any sense. I, I think it's a great idea, and a big step forward, so, and I, I think that the scrap, uh, situation, I'm pleasantly surprised, I, I, I use it, I, I see other people using it, and, uh, that has worked out remarkably well.
I think this is great, I'm just wondering about the traffic flow, how do you see, will people follow the same path past recycling up and around?
Yes.
Do you think there'll be enough increased volume?
Actually, there's a slight change, because now I've gotta drive in and get on the scale.
Right.
Then I gotta go all the way around, then I gotta drive back to pay.
Yeah.
This is basically, I drive through once.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll, the, the way we're set up will make more sense, because they go to recycling first, you know, do all the recycling food scraps, and then go up the side and just drop their bag.
That's right, and even if there is a line, it's gonna move fast, because you're not dealing with anybody, just gonna throw them back in.
There's no transaction at that side window any longer.
Yeah.
Um, anyone who wants to, you know, do bulky or something would still have to do the scale, go into the scale house, you know. Yeah, it simplifies things.
Have you had any?
I'm done.
Have you had any discussions with the haulers? I mean, you said it might reduce their, their volume or their business.
Well, I'll let Janice answer that.
Well, I mean, so as you recall, we had the, the, past year, we had the grant program with the haulers, um, um, they were challenging to work with, let's put it that way. Um, one try, one was just non, you know, they said they were gonna do it, but then they didn't do it, and then they were just not even available to talk to us for whatever reason, to let us know what their issues were. Uh, one did step up and had to be significantly reduce their, uh, clientele that they could service in order to make it work.
You're talking about the scrap situation?
With the food scrap program, the, yeah, the co-collection program. So, um, you know, we've had contact with haulers from that standpoint, but, um, you know, I think it's just a market thing. I think they're gonna, you know, maybe, maybe they'll, they'll wanna, you know, keep their clients, maybe they'll build a cut cost, I don't know. That's gonna kind of be up to them, it's kind of a free market issue. Uh, we don't have the ability to really offer the co-collection program with the haulers right now, because there isn't a licensed facility currently, but there are, the one hauler who worked with us with the program, I believe, is still trying to get permitted at his own transfer station to try and do co-collection. So, you know, there's an opportunity there that they may have to try and, you know, really attract business by, by offering that service.
It's fair, changing the way.
Yeah, and I think that's, one of the.
I could see somebody asking the hauler, well, I only got one bag, so I'm only gonna pay you three dollars.
Right, exactly, and that, and that may, they, that may happen. Um, but it's a free market, and, you know, people will have to, you know, maybe some more ingenuity will come into play with the haulers because of this, and that's the, you know, the real idea here is really to reduce the trash or increase recycling. Um, and so if that's a, you know, an outcome, um, I think that's a good thing.
Devil in the details.
Until such time as the state is really willing to regulate the haulers, that solution is not gonna appear. It's just, uh, private enterprise is gonna continue to dominate that market.
Yeah.
Just, I, I have no doubt about that. Janice, Pam, and, and Crystal Brown have heard me rail against the EPs, uh, but more importantly, the legislatures in activity in terms of regulating haulers, this is a statewide problem, uh, and it's not gonna get, it's not gonna, it's gonna be impacted by what we do here, but the solution, uh, in terms of landfill, uh, is just, is, is not, is, is not gonna happen until such time as the legislators, uh, get, get serious about this, so. I'll get off the, uh, I'll get off my stand. Um, quick question, um, are the merchants able to earn anything on the sale of the bags?
Increase track.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, currently, that's the draw, if, if you're gonna go there to get your bag, you're gonna buy something else.
Right.
Got it.
Equivalent of a loss leader for a store, if you can get them in.
Community service.
Yes.
We, uh, we've often talked about percentage split, uh, households who utilize, private haulers versus, versus those who utilize, um, the waste transfer station, do we have any, any, anything better than a wild, a swag?
Not really.
No.
I don't think so, I don't think we have a handle on the numbers.
Okay, that was it for me.
Do we, what do you need today?
Nothing, we're gonna, so the next step is to present this also to the Board of Selectmen in Madison. As you know, you folks have the final authority over what happens at the transfer station, but we wanna include them, obviously, and, and get their input, and then our expectation will be to come back, um, at the July meeting, so hopefully get your endorsement of, of moving forward with all of this.
You say the one struggle, especially in Madison, is going to be, you know, driving down for a bag. Yeah, that's, like you said, it's, it's a market base, included with your other chores.
And the, the element there, however, is those who already come, will, I think, will continue to come. The real issue would, would be, how do we get more people from Madison coming? Because unfortunately, it's on the brand. Because unfortunately, it's on the Branford side of Guilford, not the Madison side of Guilford, so it's a bit more of a drive. But there are some who already come from Madison. We want to certainly encourage them to keep coming more often with less trash each time.
It's like you said, it's market-driven, and we can't really do about it. Yes, it's on the wrong side of town, but it is near Naxos.
And hi, this is Kristen Brown. I just wanted to say, I think one of the reasons that people from Madison will still want to continue coming is, is the food scraps. It, it definitely is a trend across the country. A lot of people want to do it, and you guys offer it, so it's, it's a plus for them.
Thank you, Kristen. Kristen is with Waste Bureau, a consultant at DEP, and as well as several of the council governments are using, utilizing to, to help make these transitions.
Does Branford have a food scrap program?
They do. They have collection at their transfer station.
I think what's nice about it is you come weekly to get rid of your recycling and your food scraps. And then you'll see if you have a bag or not, bring your trash. Now you have to wait till you have like seven bags before you bring your trash. Now you can just bring your bag each week instead of waiting and holding on to it. I mean, that's my guess on people are doing.
I've been doing the food scrap diversion since the pilot program, and I continue to do it today. And it, it's significant, the amount of weight that I've taken on my, like, it is undeniable. You know, they use it, they use the number of thirty percent. In my case, I think it's more than that. Also, you know, it's only two of us, we're not generating an awful lot of trash other than food scrap stuff, so.
It's remarkable, though, you actually see it.
Yeah.
Just started with the recycling, it's just remarkable.
Good work by the committee. For a number of years, this was a dormant committee. And I appreciate the, the work that you guys have done.
It's been three years since we reformed officially.
Who else is on the committee?
Pardon?
Who else is on the committee?
Terry Kane.
We are short one.
We're short, yeah.
Short one from Madison. So locally, we have Terry Kane and we have Bernie Lombardi, just joined from Guilford. And then in Madison, we have Fran Brady and Craig Noack, and they're short one from Madison, so it's a six-member board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will see you July first. See you next year.
Next fiscal year. Discuss to take possible action on a resolution with the state Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for invasive aquatic plant management in Lake Quantipar and authorize the first level to sign all related documents. Unfortunately, Kevin is on vacation and he's out of them, so you'll just have to go with any of the details. This is the program, whoever you hear, lot of control. You have the grant there. Any comments or questions? Yeah, it's, it's, is there, all right, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
And those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item eight, we consider to take possible action on applications to include the 2024 Neighborhood Assistant Program as a result of the earlier public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the application for Sarah Tuxes? Second.
I was absent during the discussion.
That's true.
Second.
We, there were two applications. One was from LifeLinks, one was from Sarah. We are comfortable moving forward with the Sarah one, based on the discussion we had here. Not so comfortable with LifeLinks owing to the fact that our Human Services Commission denied their application after many years of being on there. And I believe they were also denied the same opportunity at Guilford Foundation. I can, I can validate that, but there are concerns over the efficacy of the program, the way that program is run. So there's a motion to approve the Sarah Tuxes. So.
If outreach to the light.
Right. Kane at the very end of that.
Give us a little more information.
But if it turns out that we have to, that we can't, we don't have any more time on this, then we go ahead.
All right, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye, this is for Sarah, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Discuss to take possible action on an ordinance amendment to extend the temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments in the town of Guilford as a result of the earlier public hearing, and I believe we'd agreed on September thirty-first.
We did. I think I was the first one to make that suggestion, but I'm, I'm inclined to want a delay until November third, based on the comments about the.
Let's not, let's not.
I know.
We gave ourselves more time to procrastinate, but.
But the thing of it is, you know, we, we pretty much already lost June, so we were going to have our workshops July, you know, I mean, and, yeah, I, I feel like, I want to have these workshops, we need some more education and discussion. And maybe we can't get them all in between now and September thirty, so I don't know. It's crazy that we keep denying, not, not denying, delaying, but, but in a way, I think.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Motion, second?
Yes.
Second. See any, the second?
Yes, second.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item ten, discuss to take possible action on request from Guilford A to provide mental health and addiction resource information to residents of their tax bill. This has become obviated as we do not have time to get them included in the mail. And as it turns out, the, our, the folks who sent out our bills don't have the capacity to put something like that in the mailing. So, great idea, Leah, but we're going to, and from Leah, but we're going to look at how, what other opportunities can we take to get that information into the community, particularly on, on mental health services? All right, item, item eleven, appointments and resignations. Act on a resignation received from Jason Marche from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
Some move.
A second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven dot two, act on a recommendation to reappoint Jake Mayo to the Standing Building Committee for a term to expire June seventeenth, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Yes, some move.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you not voting?
Yes, I'm voting, I'm sorry.
I know it's been a, but, but. Discuss to take possible action to reappoint Bernie Lombardi to the Waste Transfer Station, Station Commission. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And I'd like to second that. Any discussion? Here we go. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item four, discuss to take possible action to appoint Barbara Hargreaves to the Affordable Housing Committee. At this point, I don't think we have any vacancies. So, and we did not, we did not appoint anyone to it. All right, so the discussion has been, do we increase the size of the commission, right? Or do we go back and, and, and have the commission, the ad hoc committee, go back and review it for appropriateness of asking some, some who have committed and had admitted to them to either, you know, graciously withdraw, or in some cases, if they were interested in changing their political affiliation. But I think we're leaning towards the former, which would be to increase it, which means revise the ordinance.
We have to revise the ordinance, but we had, we had the two co-chairs, of which I am one. We had discussions, we had discussions with our committee, we're still a committee at this point. Well, the commission exists, but we're still a committee. We, we feel in, in, in that inclusivity is a good idea. We don't mind extending it for a few more to get the balance correct on the party representation. And I'm, I'm very happy that we are looking towards in getting the balance. And I think this particular person, I saw her application, she might be very good, but we can't really act on it today. But I would recommend, what, you know, I know it's an ordinance change, but if, if we went that way, we, I think we could solve a lot of our issues, you know? And I think that-
Is there any downside to going that way?
No, I don't think so, because I, this is for Peter and Matt with greater legal minds than myself, but somebody said that it, as, as we're, if we vote to increase the size, we could appoint the people that we have and continue to meet with, with the concept that the opening slots aren't for, for any party other than a D. To be right. So, you know, that's, you know. And, and already, I believe the nominating chairs, I think we have one in the room, are actively looking, I know that, at nominating chair for the eyes. They got right on it, and I believe Deb, you, you were on it.
I was just confused because there was nothing, I, I, monthly I get a report from Tracy. And so there, this is what I go by. And so there's nothing on here because it's not really been made an actual.
We have no members yet.
Commission yet. Yeah, but you're saying it's an ad hoc, so it's sort of like I had no resource because it wasn't on here.
Yeah, I mean, once the ordinance passed, I think it should have gone on that list with blanks.
Right, right. And then, and then, and then I would have been aware of it to, to work on it.
Yeah, it would have been shown, but with no names.
Yeah, it was never shown, so there was not.
So, so I, yes, I will be working on.
I mean, one thing we could do, if, if there's a holdup for any reason, we could appoint positions now. We could appoint Barbara, and we could appoint X number of others, you know, just so we don't go over the bare majority. We could do that.
Why don't we just initiate the ordinance change process today?
Um, we'll have that in the hearing. We said, we just had, we just had a hearing for July, we had a hearing for July one, to change the ordinance.
Right.
All right. First off, let's table Barbara Hargreaves. Is there a motion to table?
I'll, I'll move to do that.
Second. Secondly, is there a motion, we'll call this, to add eleven A to the agenda to set a public hearing to amend the ordinance that created the Affordable Housing Commission specifically to address the total number of commissioners? That needs, is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
This is on both motions?
Yeah. This is, this is on a motion to have a public hearing to change the composition of the Affordable Housing Commission.
Aye.
Aye. And those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I did vote, I did, I voted.
I don't think we voted, I don't think we voted on the tabling of Barbara's, but that's fine.
I'm, I moved it, but I'm not sure we voted on it. I think you seconded it, too.
I think so.
Yeah.
All right. Well, on a motion to table Barbara Hargreaves.
Aye.
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 Good. Okay, item twelve, request for use of town property. Act on a request from the Conservation Commission to use the green, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Boy, we're getting real.
Somebody's mixed me up. Makes me, I am old. I'm older.
Feel old, right. May, date May fourth for his Earth Day fifty-five, fifty-fifth anniversary celebration event. That's amazing. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
Act, item twelve dot two, act on a request from Alex Inc. to use the green, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, rain date five eighteen for the Guilford Pride event. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And a second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twelve dot three, act on a request from Yale, the Gaver Health, and Smilow Cancer Center to use the green September seventh, twenty twenty-four for the closer to Free Ride. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twelve dot four, act on an application, use the green for the Police Department National Night Out, October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And second?
Second.
Second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twelve dot five, act on a request from the Police Department to place a sign on the green advertising the National Night Out. Sign placement September twenty-seventh through October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
A second, we got it. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye. That motion carries. Twelve dot six, act on the Police Department Noise Variance Application for their National Night Out on October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Some move. A second.
This is an interesting process question, because guess who signs those?
Police.
The police.
Giving permission to themselves.
All right. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room? All right, that motion carries. Item thirteen, committee reports. I think we've just gone through the committee, the only committee that we're currently actively working on. And anything on the correspondence that we've received? Any comments on any of those? Hearing none. Old business? New business? Public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, Deb. All right, hearing no public forum, let's move to, is there a motion going to executive session? Discuss and approve a successor collective bargaining agreement between the town of Guilford and UPS EU Local four twenty-four, Unit ninety-two, Communications and Police Dispatchers, July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a motion?
Some move.
That's second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. And we're inviting in our esteemed labor attorney, Chris Hodgson. Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some move.
A second. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. During executive session, there were no motions made, no actions were taken, but however, as a result of the discussion, is there a motion to approve a successor bargaining agreement between the town and the IPS EU Local four twenty-four, Unit ninety-two, Communication and Police Dispatchers, July, effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven? Is there a motion? We, we have that motion. No, we didn't need a motion, that's right.
I'll make the motion, Matt.
Those got the motion? A second here?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? The only comment I'd make is there is a bit of creativity in this negotiation and the resulting underlying contract, which we'll be talking about more going forward, so appreciate the work, Mitch, Chris, and Lou, right?
Yep, Lou's on the side.
Thank you. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
And the chiefs, though.
And the chiefs, oh yeah, I'm sorry, the chiefs as well, right. All right, with no further business, to attend, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Try your minds, an undebatable motion, aye, everyone.
Aye.
Thank you. Lou, thanks for coming in remotely.
From, from Long Island. Thanks, everybody.
No, he, he had, he had-